Senator, prior to our recess, I had Senator Tom Ada, the vice speaker, with an amendment, Senator Rodriguez making some clarifications. Senator Espaldon also, who said there are a series of questions that he has. And on the list right now is Senator S. Nicholas and then Senator Espaldon. On the list to speak is Senator S. Nicholas and then yourself. And if there's anybody else who would like to speak, please indicate by raising your hand. So Senator, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I did confer what I'm about to share with the author, and I'll share it with the body, and then I'll ask for guidance from the chair. But my concerns, Madam Speaker, with respect to the legislation, first of all, I want to say that I do support moving this process forward. Once we vet and clear everything that may or may not be of concern, for me, my concerns are on page seven, lines one through eight. Because the way this bill will set up the process is that if an individual has a land claim that they need to get adjudicated, they file their claim, and then the one who's responsible for doing all the research and coming up with the findings and making the recommendation in this bill on page seven, in the sections that I mentioned, is the agency head, whoever the head of the agency is. So if it's the utility, then it's the utility head; if it's DPW, it's the DPW head. But my concern is that that is the only individual in this bill who's responsible for validating whether or not the claim has merit. And then from there, they get their findings, and then they begin passing it through. And so it goes to their governing board, it goes to the governor, and it gets transmitted to the legislature, and then from there, we appropriate in order to pay out the claim. My concern is that at that initial step in the process, the findings, the fact findings, and basically getting the ball rolling to compensate the landowner, I'm concerned that it's just one person who's able to say yea or nay. And don't get me wrong, there is something built into the bill where if the findings are not to the satisfaction of the claimant, they can appeal it. But my concern is more on the opposite end of the spectrum. What if the director says, yes, absolutely, and we're going to compensate you, you know, for not only the place where the power poles are, but for 16 feet in front of it, 16 feet behind it, because that's set that variance? And then we're going to compensate you for the air rights, because we're blocking your view of the telephone pole being there? And all of a sudden, what probably would have been a $20,000 claim can balloon into a $200,000 claim. And it's just one individual who will be able to set the terms and conditions upon which we're going to be determining what's going to get appraised and how that value is going to be determined. So that's my primary concern at this point with the bill, is that the hurdle for us to be able to determine what is or is not a valid claim and how that cost is to be determined really is in the hands of a single individual of the way this bill is written. And so in discussions with the author, I was suggesting that maybe the agency head can do the fact finding, but the governing board must certify that the findings are -- must certify as to the accuracy of the findings. And if there is no governing board, if it's DPW, then the Land Use Commission must certify as to the accuracy of the findings. Either way, I think that we need more individuals able to check and balance the findings. And I think that at the end of the day, or in this case, at the beginning of the process, we do need somebody or some entity certifying the findings. Because in the event that those findings are proven to be false or erroneous, we do need to have recourse to be able to go back and say, hey, you know what? You're the one that certified that that was a valid claim, but based on somebody else coming in here and saying that that was his property versus that person's property, that claim now has an overriding concern. And so we need a certifying element in the bill, and I believe that it would be more prudent for us to have multiple parties involved at the onset to validate whether or not a claim is legitimate to move forward in the process. So that being said, Madam Speaker, I am going to need more time to be able to confer with the author and kind of build that into the bill. But I wanted to speak to that at this time, in the event that some of my colleagues may want to add to the discussion, because I really think that that's critical. Because otherwise, at this point, it's just one person who can say what it is and how much we have to pay, and then it almost goes through like a rubber stamp process where, okay, yes, that's what the director said, and then it gets passed to the governor; yes, this is coming from the agency; it gets passed to the legislature; yes, this is coming from the governor. And all of a sudden, we're putting our people's tax dollars on the hook for something that one person, in the beginning, was able to decide on their own. So that's kind of where I'm coming from on this. There is another item here that I wanted to potentially amend as well. But that being said, Madam Speaker, if the chair would allow, I would like to go ahead and yield my time to anybody else who might have another issue they'd like to bring up, so that I can have the opportunity to try and work out what I just discussed on the floor, Madam Speaker.
Okay. So you are looking at making a couple of amendments, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll give you that time. Senator S. Nicholas, I'll go ahead and recognize Senator Espaldon. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on this main motion? Okay. I know that Speaker Juan Pat may have an amendment, so I will go ahead and recognize you, Senator Espaldon.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have a love-hate relationship with this bill. And I'll tell you why I love it, because the intent is right. Constitutionally, there can be no government taking without just compensation. And it is a fact that our government has taken property for roads, for easements, for whatever purposes, for public purposes, in which there has been no compensation. And I'll state that from the start. So I understand the need for legislation along these lines. However, in addressing it, I guess the question I ask myself is, is this the methodology? Is this the bill? Is this the policy call that we're going to make to be able to right the wrongs? And please, I ask my colleagues to please understand, this bill is not a typical housekeeping type of a bill, where we change a phrase here and we change a phrase there. This is a very substantive policy call that will affect us, not just for the next year or two, but probably for a long, long time in the future. And so if we're going to go down this road, then let's do it well, let's do it with a lot of input, and let's do it with a lot of good discussion. There are problems with this bill. And I guess the heartache that I have is that, yes, what the author of this bill has represented is true. There have been roundtable discussions, and there were a couple markup meetings. In fact, the last markup meeting just being as of late last week. In that markup meeting, the Attorney General herself came to the meeting to at least discuss the points of law that were of concern, that needed to really be thought out and that really needed to be addressed. And we went through the meeting, and, well, let me just do a little side on that. At the previous markup meeting, the Attorney General herself was not there, or the Attorney General's office was not even represented at the previous markup meeting, and as well as, which I had requested, somebody from Public Works, and specifically, perhaps whoever was in charge of the public rights and ways and easements, just to try to understand what their input would be. Because the original bill that was introduced put a heavy burden on them, as well as Latin Management, as well as a few others. And really, the question I needed to ask them is, once they review this bill, what are the implications to their agencies in terms of their needs for the manpower, in terms of their needs for any other administrative costs? They were not there for the first markup, they were there for the second, at least Public Works was there. But we didn't get to the point where we asked them how much it would cost, because prior to that, we had already discussed with the Attorney General that the administrative provisions that were included in the original bill and that was brought to public hearing would probably be not included, or should not be included, in any substitute version. And there are various reasons that the Attorney General gave for that, which I agreed with. And that was one of the -- and those issues were some of the same issues that I had when I first saw the original bill. This bill came onto my desk yesterday during lunch. I didn't really get a chance to review it until last night, and I didn't get a chance to really do it with a fine-tooth comb, because I was reviewing several other bills as well. This morning, though, I did get some communication from the Attorney General's office, and she even has a three-page list of concerns that, you know, that follow this bill. And I don't know how to address this, Madam Speaker, because the implications of these concerns really almost necessitate a calling for a committee of the whole to bring in the Attorney General, and maybe even some of these agencies, that this bill really, really puts a burden on. And so at this point, before I go any further, I would like a motion, if we are going to go with this bill right now, we can either set it aside and really try -- the good author has the same three pager of the AG's concerns.
Can you also make sure that the other members have copies as well? I mean, it seems serious enough that I think it would be only fair that the other members have access to the same three pages.
Yes, ma'am. Then if we could just take a minute, then, and I'll have this circulated.
So we'll take a wee sec to be able to do that, yes. Thank you, Senator. We're back in session. And there are the three-page concerns that Senator Espaldon had distributed to everyone. Senators, senators, aye, aye. I am talking. The speaker is speaking. You all have copies of the three-page You all have copies of the three-page document or concerns from the AG's office that Senator Espaldon provided for everyone to review. And because it is lengthy, we're going to, I'm going to go ahead and set the bill aside and move on to the next bill. Senator Rodriguez, yes?
Thank you very much, Speaker. Speaker, if you can kindly reconsider, you know, we do have this in front of us. As I said earlier, we went through lengthy discussions, the public hearing, several markup meetings. And, you know, I feel, we feel that the bill as substituted on the floor really has taken into consideration as much of the feedback and comments we received. And now, really, it's a policy call. It's a policy call that this body needs to make. And we've waited too long. And if there's any amendments based on this, then I think we should entertain. If Senator Espaldon has those amendments, then perhaps that's what we should entertain to move it forward instead of setting aside again, knowing the aggressive agenda we have in the short time period. I just don't want this, again, to be one of those where it's set aside and then not, you know, we don't get back to it before we conclude this session. So if I can please, just kindly reconsider.
But it's been, of course, the practice, at least this week, is that whenever we set back, I would continue down the line. And then I always go back again when members of the body and, of course, the mover is ready to go back. So it's not as if though it's going to be set back, you know, and to the point, like you say, with this aggressive calendar that we have, because we do have 10 more bills, including this. And of course, we have this afternoon, a couple hours, and all day tomorrow. So I mean, I've been, of course, been very diligent to make sure that when we end in the afternoon, or even after every bill, really, I go, I always try to make it back. And yours is definitely, aside from 149, is still on the top of the agenda. So it's not going to lose its place.
Didn't hear whether he's going to proffer any amendments.
Well, I know that in the earlier discussion with Senator Espaldon, he said all of the concerns, of course, that, you know, he has. And everybody was curious as to what those are. And that's the reason why we have now these copies. And then, of course, recess would always have to be set aside to go back and now take, like, for example, just looking at this, the different sections that he was addressing, like Section 2, 3, 4, 8, you know, that means amendments then, if they're going to be proffered. That means I'm going to have to take a recess again to have those amendment done. And I'd rather that, try to have all these amendments then in writing to be prepared. And what I'll do is that, you know, depending, again, where we're at on the bills, anytime between 3:00 to 5:00, I will continue to go back to Senator Espaldon to see if the amendments are ready and in place, and then go back.
Okay. But I'm ready to address this if you'd like to, though, just to answer the concerns, if that's your pleasure. I'm ready to do that.
Okay. But I think that he wants to also make amendments, right? I don't want to speak for you, but Senator Espaldon.
Madam Speaker, I think it would be wise to set it aside for right now, because these are just the Attorney General's issues. I have other issues as well that I'd like to bring up. And that's why, to me, I started off saying that I have a love-hate relationship with this bill, because this is not just your typical housekeeping type of legislation or something that, you know, that deals with $100,000 here and $100,000 there, and, you know, moving money from one fund to another. This is a bill, a very substantive policy call, right, that needs to be scrutinized, that needs to be understood by all concerned, because this is a major shift in what it is. Now, I do want to point out, when it comes down to inverse condemnation cases, there is a process in place right now that is available to anybody who has a claim. So it's not as though there is no process and this needs to move forward today, at this very second, right? There is a process in place. We can discuss.
Yes, Madam Speaker, we said earlier, there is a process.
Madam Speaker, I have the floor.
And it's tilted against the law.
Senator, please.
But he's trying to just, you know, just to derail this effort. I mean, he's tried it last session. If he has amendments, then proffer the amendments now.
Madam--
So, you know what, I'm going to set it aside. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There's just too much time taken. Like I said, I already promised that I will, between 3:00 to 5:00, I'll continue to work with both of you. You can approach me anytime and let me know when those amendments are ready. And I would definitely go back after the next bill. I would, you know, that I would promise you. Okay? So we're going to go on then to, let me see, what's the next number? 191. Senator McCready.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to send Bill 191-33 as amended and substituted by the sponsor to the third reading, file on discuss.
Okay. So it's as amended and substituted, yes. Senator, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 191 is an act to amend subsection A and B of 12104, and item 3. Basically, what this bill does is it sets towing notice requirement rates, regulations, liens, penalties, and deposits of fines. And I can honestly say that this bill first came to me from one half of the stakeholders of the towing industry. The towing industry was not the ones who came to me for this. But after learning, after doing research and learning about what the problems were in the industry, we had a public hearing and then a markup hearing where both sides of the spectrum attended. We had the towing companies, and we had the insurance and banking companies at the markup meeting. So basically, this is a compilation of all of their ideas into this bill. And I can honestly say that I wasn't the expert coming into this. It was brought to me. But by doing some research and learning on both sides of what has been going on and what has been taking place, I think we've come up with a solution to our towing requirements. And if you look, as we amended and then substituted, basically, the entire bill consists of time periods of when the reporting requirement is suggested, fines if the retard, the fines if the towing requirements are not adhered to, and also a amendment that would mandate that everybody now has to get their car, if they get their car towed, the knowledge of it being towed has to be reported. And so when we had the public hearing, the towing industry was not present. But when we had the markup hearing, both sides were present. And the only real objection to the amendments of the bill was the time sensitiveness of what we were trying to accomplish. If you see in our first bill, we had two days of reporting requirements. And then in the markup hearing, they thought that maybe that wasn't enough. So we went to 72 hours. And then after more discussion, we thought that seven days would be appropriate, a little long, but appropriate for them to report. So that was basically the only concern at the end of the process of the bill and how we would move forward. So both sides, I felt, came together. And this is what the bill is today, basically, from both sides of stakeholders and including the chairperson of the committee. So, you know, I asked my colleagues to support it, and I'll answer any questions that I can answer that they have. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak? Senator Sernicless?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to rise in full support of the legislation. It does build upon the intent that we had in the previous legislature to try and tighten up the towing environment with respect to making sure everybody knows what's going on and making sure that there's proper documentation and everyone is able to validate the actions they're taking on the towing side, on the lender's side, on the car owner's side. And this is just another piece of building that more refined regulatory environment. So I wanted to thank Yauta for introducing the legislation and rise in support of the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Tomata, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill. We did have a public hearing, and then followed by a roundtable discussion where a more lively exchange of information took place. And quite frankly, when the bill first came out, I had some concerns, reservations about some of the amendments being made. For example, the existing law right now only requires the towing companies to provide a report to the police department that they have hooked up to a vehicle and towed it away. In those situations where a vehicle may have been parked in an unauthorized location, and let's say up at the post office in Tamooning by ITC, where there's a sign that clearly says parking for post office customers only, but people park there and then they go across the street to the ITC. And it got to the point where the post office had to, the post office then basically authorized a tow trucks to come in. And when you see a guy park a car and then he goes across the street, instead of going in the post office, hook up and take him away. And the existing law would have covered that, that said that in that situation, the towing company had to provide this notice, this report, within so many days to the police department so that, you know, somebody knows where this vehicle's at. The amendment that was made to the bill was that now that report must be made to all vehicles that get towed away. And I was thinking, well, if I was the one that called the tow truck company to come and take this vehicle and tow it to wherever, why does he, why would he need to play, do a report? And during that roundtable discussion, it came out that, you know, especially the financing companies, that there are actually folks who maybe have only made, you know, two, three, four payments out of the, you know, 60 payments to go. And it's kind of like, fine, take the car and, you know, tow it away. And then, and then he walks away. So the owner, and there's a situation where the owner says, you know, gets his consent to tow the car away. But then, he starts defaulting on the payment. And next thing we know, by the time that the financing company is aware of where the vehicle is, the storage charges have really just climbed up. And the towing company has every right to say, it sat here, took up space for months, and so here's the bill. And so that sort of situation really prompted the requirement that the towing companies must provide that report to the police department every time, regardless of whether the owner gives his consent or not. There was also other amendments made to the bill where normally, under normal situations, the towing company must provide the notice within, you know, seven days. But the towing company, for example, Nissan Auto, they have a car rental company, and they're saying, hey, look, if you guys tow away my vehicle, and there's this decal that says, you know, ex-company rental, my God, pick up the phone and tell us. We'll go and pick it up. I mean, for all we know, some, you know, a tourist could have rented the car, and he has no intention of coming back to Guam anymore. And he gets on an airplane, and, you know, so in the meantime, you know, when the car's overdue, that's when the car company starts looking for it. So in that situation, another amendment was made to address that sort of thing. So I think there's a lot of amendments that was made here which accommodated both sides, both the stakeholders. The financing companies, they just want to be able to locate that vehicle in sufficient time. Otherwise, their insurance coverages will not kick in if, you know, it's reported to the insurance company after so many days. The towing companies are accommodated from the standpoint that they need more than just that two days. They were asking for, well, they got, in this case, seven days. And they think that that is reasonable time for them to be able to go gather the information as to who the registered owner is, and then to be able to send out the necessary notices. So I think the Bill 191 certainly does a good job of addressing the concerns that both the finance, the financing companies and the towing companies, without getting into any of the horror stories that were discussed at the roundtable, I think it addresses the issues adequately. And so I stand in full support of the bill. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motions, is there-- On the main motions, is there anyone else who would like to participate in the discussion? There being non-senator, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And as you can see from the chairman, Senator Anna, he had a lot to do with the bill because he made a lot of notes, and he called the press conferences, I mean, the--
Roundtable.
The roundtable and the markup meetings. And so I thank him and his staff for leading the way for this bill. And I'd like to also add himself and Senator Sernicless as co-sponsors. Thank you.
On the amendment, no objections, so ordered. And on the motion to send Bill 191 to the third reading file, no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to you and our fellow colleagues. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Bill Number 229-33COR, substituted by the Committee of the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, to place it in the third reading file for consideration by the body.
Yes, no objections, so ordered. And you want to speak on it?
Just very briefly, please, Madam Speaker, if I may.
May proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just for the information of our members here in the body and yourself, Madam Speaker, this legislation is very similar in nature to all of the other authorizations that are provided to our law enforcement and our public safety entities. And that's inclusive of the Guam Police Department, the Department of Corrections, the Guam Fire Department, as well as the judiciary of Guam. And what it is, is whenever any of our personnel in the law enforcement field either are deployed to a, are activated for military deployment or military service, or whether, in fact, there's an extensive illness that has affected any of our law enforcement personnel, then they have the option of being able to pull in a retired individual in that particular field. For example, the Guam Police Department will have the option of pulling in a police officer to be able, who has retired and who has since left the agency, to be able to pull in and fill in the gap, so to speak, until that individual returns from military service or returns from his or her long-term illness. This provision would provide that same allowance to the department, the Division of Aquatic and Wildlife Resources at the Department of Agriculture, specifically for the conservation officers. There's one exception, though, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when we were looking at allowing the retired conservation officers the opportunity to be pulled back, to retain their retirement status, but to be pulled back and to provide services to the conservation division at the Department of Agriculture, it was shared with the committee that there are only three individuals out there who are since retired. And that two of them already has extended a statement to them that, in fact, they have absolutely no intentions of coming back, even if, in fact, they're hired on a short-term basis. So that leaves the agency just with one individual. Madam Speaker, the exception to this is it would allow also for the hiring of limited-term conservation officer recruits. And I need to make sure that I clarify that, because in addition to allowing for the recruitment or the hiring, short-term hiring of a retired conservation officer, it would also give that allowance in terms of pulling in a limited-term conservation officer recruit to fill in during the military activation of any of the conservation officers or the long-term illness or long-term disability status of any of their personnel. long-term illness or long-term disability status of any of their personnel. There is a provision in here, Madam Speaker, which only restricts it for the duration of the absence of that individual. And I need to further clarify that because regardless as to any limited-term status and pulling in personnel who meet the requirements and who are able to be pulled in on a short-term basis under this provision, that it would only apply during the absence of the individual who either is activated for military service or until that individual who is undergoing a long-term illness situation returns back to service at the Department of Agriculture. So Madam Speaker, that is the provision that we have before us. And this was placed on the agenda this session specifically because in three months, there will be three individuals. They have 10 positions in which conservation officers are presently filling or were presently filling. And I say were because one retired in December, so they're down to nine positions that are presently filled. Of that, in the next three months, three individuals will be leaving. So that brings the personnel conservation officer force down to six individuals. Also, there's one individual that is presently on disability status and is not working physically at the Department of Agriculture because of a physical disability. So that brings the force, that will bring the force in a matter of two, three months down to five individuals. That's a sense of urgency that I'm asking my colleagues, our colleagues, Madam Speaker, to consider when in fact looking at this particular legislation, providing that allowance for the Department of Agriculture, the conservation division to be able to backfill until such time that these individuals return. So I ask for your consideration and thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, Senator McCready, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I want to rise in full support of Senator Uggins' bill. You know, this is, this is another piece of legislation, Madam Speaker, that we have to think long-term. We have to, we have to right-size this department so, so in 10 or five years from now, we don't continue to have these, these instances where we have to, almost at an emergency filling position. So, but I really, I really appreciate the fact that the sponsor is, is addressing this problem. And I hope, I hope that one day we can, we can make sure that we right-size this department and, and that way they can implement some of the mandates that, that are much needed on our island for this. So thank you very much and I rise in full support.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the main motion, is there anybody else who would like to, to speak? On Bill 229, the main motion, there being none, so on the motion then to send 229 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senators. Bill Number 231, Senator Frank Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to move Bill 231-33LS substituted by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary to the third reading file. And I'd like to have the opportunity to speak on it, please.
So one moment, just wanted to make sure that it's as substituted, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Senator, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Actually, as we speak, there's an amendment, that's actually a couple amendments that are being distributed. And while that's being distributed, let me go ahead and speak to the introduction of, first off, Bill 231-33 is an act to add a new Chapter 20 to Title IX Guam Code annotated relative to acts of violence against an unborn child. And before, on the onset, I'd like to thank the 10 other sponsors, the 10 other colleagues that I have that have sponsored this piece of legislation. This bill, ma'am, seeks to be able to protect that child that is still in the womb of the mother, as the mother is trying to provide the best environment for that unborn being by adding penalties for acts of violence that could be committed or that are committed, not just on the pregnant mother, on the mother, but could have effect and will have effect on the unborn child as well. And, you know, there is a, there's current law that's, that's in place actually federally that addresses this issue and many other states as well have similar laws that provide the same kind of protections to an unborn child. Now that I think that all the amendments are put out, I'd like to, first, ma'am, the First Amendment that I'd like to be able to, to put out first is found basically on page two, both on lines 10 and lines 20, where it says the Unborn Victims of Violence Act of 2015, to change that accordingly to 2016.
On, wait, on page three?
Page two.
Oh, page two, I'm sorry. Okay, line, okay, 10 to 2016.
And line 20.
And line 20, 2016.
Okay, so that is-
On that amendment, no objections, so ordered.
Okay. The next amendment that I'd like to put out, Madam Speaker, is a, basically a new subsection 20 dash, I mean 20.50, which is a, a section that addresses aggravated murder of an unborn child. The whole premise here, Madam Speaker, is that type of violence that could be affected on a pregnant woman or an individual for that matter, any individual for that matter, is the same type of violence that can be affected on an unborn child. And so one of the things that I, is, that was brought to my attention is that if we want to address the murder and the manslaughter, we should also address also the more aggravated crime of aggravated murder as per our statutes, our, our local statutes. And so what 20.50 aggravated murder of an unborn child would do is also provide the same, same type of offense. We've already got murder and manslaughter in the bill, but I just also want to add aggravated murder to the bill. No, 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 it's adding it, because, no, we're gonna, we'll put it at 2050 and then make the changes on those sections. Putting that 2050 and then make the next, 2050, make it 2016.
Senators, your discussion is with the chair.
So what we're gonna do, Madam Speaker, is when we put that new section in, then all the other sections afterwards correspondingly, well then the numbers will change, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I was actually speaking to you, I saw the reflection on the good senator's eyes.
Okay. Okay. Yes, you're not kidding, I can't, I don't even know what I'm going to be ruling on if you're just having your conversation between yourselves. So I might have to rule both of you out of order. Okay, so Senator, is there anything else or you want to open it now for discussion?
I want to, we'll open it for discussion, Madam Speaker. Well, and then, I wanted to, you want me to proffer all the amendments and then?
Yeah, that might be a good thing, so then that way everybody-
Okay. So Madam Speaker, if 20.50, if this amendment is, is accepted, then what it'll do is for the, it'll make what we see as 20.50 here, 20.60.
Okay, so I, so the general, the general motion then, I mean, for legal counsel is to appropriately make, you know, the proper changes, the technical changes-
On the numbering.
So with that amendment, no objections, so ordered. So your amendment now here in this case that you're proffering, proffering is the new, at least the way it's written, the new 20.50. Has everyone had an opportunity to read that First Amendment? It says, a sheet that has A1, 2, 3, B. We're gonna do that first, that's the first one.
Just the, just the one at the top, the one that's, that's number one. The one and number two at the bottom we're not gonna do, because it's already taken care.
Oh, you're not gonna do, okay, so anyway, so, all right, so let me just get rid of that first. And so right now, the only amendment that we are working with and legal counsel, you're able to follow, and the clerks, where it says a new section 20.50. All right, on the amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator San Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just of the, the move of the amendment to help clarify, because I'm just kind of looking at the whole, all of the amendments that are gonna be proffered in context, and there is going to be a subsequent amendment that would, that would basically make this new 20 dash, 20 dot 50 be an exception from knowledge, not a defense, on, on subsection 2090. And so I just wanted to kind of get a better understanding, because basically all of these, all of these other charges would require that, that there is proof of knowledge and then we're going to say that this would require proof of knowledge. I just, I just want to get a better understanding of why this in particular would require-
Okay, Senator, I think, I think the mover said that in the amendments that he handed out, he's not going to be addressing where it says two on the bottom of that long amendment and oh, so you're not moving the second one, which is in line 23, page four, Senator?
No, I'm gonna move that.
Oh, you're gonna move that one, okay, but not the bottom one. Okay, so we're only addressing the very first one, which is one, which is the new section 20.50.
Yes, I understand, Madam Speaker, but in order for me to be able to, to vote clearly on, on this new 2050, would that, would this precipitate a required amendment on 2090? Because if it, I'm not quite, I'm not familiar enough with aggravated murder versus murder.
Okay, so-
And so would aggravated murder require knowledge? And that's, I need a clear understanding of that.
Senator, then you'll do your question.
And, and for the purposes of being able to answer, we're gonna, we're gonna jump to, to that, to the subsequent amendment. Note, Madam Speaker, what this provides us is in the case of murder for hire. You know, an individual who's hired to be able, I mean, by, by another individual to, to kill somebody else. It is not necessarily, basically, if that person was hired, just because he didn't know that the lady, the person that he was, the woman that he was gonna kill, or that she was gonna kill, was pregnant, was no defense.
Senator, was he able to answer your question?
So, and, and to answer his question further, no, that's why there are two separate amendments. One was on, basically on the, on the crime itself, on the offense itself. The other one was on the knowledge of whether or not the offense, you know, he was committing that kind of, while he's committing that offense, the knowledge requirement for that offense.
Senators Nicholas?
So it's, it's two separate.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm really trying to, to firmly be able to wrap my hands around this because then, just, just from reading the amendment and putting it into context, then that means that you're knowingly targeting the, the unborn child as a, as a specific victim, as opposed to a, as opposed to a, almost a secondary victim in the commission of a crime. And so if you're targeting an unborn child as a specific victim, I'm just, I'm just concerned about how that, that may conflict with how we define persons in, in existing case law, Supreme Court rulings, et cetera. Because if somebody can be targeted intentionally with premeditation, how would that fit in with, with the limitations we have in terms of identifying personhood? And the only reason why I'm asking is because I don't want us to be able to put a charge into the law that somebody may get charged with, that may get overturned because we did not properly define what that crime was or that, or that definition was in contravention to what has already been established by the Supreme Court. So I just want to make sure, because I'm okay with everything else in the bill, but this is an entirely new amendment. And I'm, and I'm wondering now if we're going to be allowing for the environment where you can premeditatedly murder an unborn child, are we getting into a slippery slope of defining the, the personhood of the, of the unborn child? And I don't want just to over-expand the bill, which I signed up for, over-expand us into an area where we're gonna be having, cases getting thrown out of court because someone got charged with aggravated murder and, and not murder and then it gets thrown out because of, of case law issues.
Okay, we're going to, I'm gonna allow for a-
Thirty seconds, recess, just thirty seconds.
Recession, but also please look at page three where there is a definition for person and a definition for unborn child. Okay, we're going to have a brief recess.
Yep.
Okay, I'm ready.
The legislature's back in session. Senator, uh, Sanicless, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In discussion with the author, I know that he'll be, um, he'll be, he'll be addressing the concern that I brought up, but I just wanted to kinda close my, 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 my discussion here. I, I, I fully support the idea that, um, that we need to make sure that we have protections in place, um, so that, you know, a woman and the baby that she's carrying isn't going to be, um, a, a single victim incidence when some, when, when somebody dies. It's, it's definitely, there's definitely two victims. My only concern is that if we push the envelope too far, the whole thing might get thrown out, and I don't want that to happen either. That being said, in discussion with the author, he's going to be addressing my initial concerns, but, um, I do rise in full support of the bill. I signed up almost immediately as a co-sponsor, when I read the, the various details and definitions in here. Um, this is something that I think, uh, is, it's time has come, uh, for us to be able to, um, make sure that, especially in those cases where, you know, a woman is carrying a baby, and, you know, she gets, uh, her car gets hit by a drunk driver, and she loses her child. That, and, and she wanted that baby, I mean, that's just, that's an incredible loss. You know, it's an incredible loss. And so, for us to be able to have these, uh, this law in place, where the, the person who committed that act of manslaughter on the unborn child will face a consequence, is something that we all need to, uh, I think, get, get behind. Um, even in the event where, um, a crime is being committed against a, a woman, and she's, she's pregnant, and, um, you know, both of them pass as a result of the commission of that crime. You know, that's something that, that was two tragedies that this community suffered, and all of us agree. You know, I mean, if we were to go to the funeral of a pregnant woman who died, we would mourn two. We would mourn two. So, um, I support this bill in that regard. I just wanna make sure, too, that in our, in our desire to consistently create that environment here in our community, we don't kinda overstep in a direction where it's gonna put everything at risk. And so, I just wanted to provide that balanced, um, perspective here today. And I appreciate the author's, um, willingness to, um, kinda, um, see where I'm coming from on, on my concerns of his proposed amendment, and I thank him for introducing the bill, and I'm honored to be a co-sponsor. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. So, on the amendment, then, where it says.
Actually, Madam Speaker, along the, along the lines of that amendment, I'm actually, uh, you know, after the discussion, and thank you very much for the, for the, for the break. Um, I'm actually, I'm gonna pull back on the, on the amendment.
Oh, and, which is the new section?
Right, I'm gonna pull it back.
Okay, so, and, and that, then, um, amendment to withdraw, no objection, so ordered. Okay, so, so Senator, then, it's, uh, it's just now on the main motion, or you wanna move on with your next amendment?
No, no, no.
Not even the.
Not even the next one.
Okay, not that, I don't either, okay. All right, so that you're not going to introduce that. So, it's just, then, the bill that has been substituted. Is there anybody who would like to speak on the bill as substituted? Senator Uggan, you, would you like to speak?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I'll make it relatively brief. Uh, you know, Madam Speaker, the sponsor of the legislation on line ten had requested that, uh, 2015 be changed to 2016. I don't know if that was consistent on line twenty also?
Yes, yes.
On the same page? Okay, then I, I stand corrected. I just wanna stand in support of this legislation, and I, I also wanna thank the sponsor personally for, uh, allowing some additional changes that were not only presented during the course of the public hearing, but also changes that we had discussed as a sidebar, in terms of making sure that, that the legislation, at least to a certain extent, based on comments shared to myself and himself, uh, make it enforceable. So, I stand, stand in support of this legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, anyone else who'd like to speak? Senator Blas, then? Senator, would you?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before I move my closing, I can make a motion to add, um, Senator Uggan, also as a sponsor to the.
I'm sorry, who?
Senator Uggan.
Uggan.
As a sponsor to the legislation.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
You know, you know, Madam Speaker, and, and thank you. Um, and I wanna thank the, the committee chair and, and, and the committee, uh, for working expeditiously to be able to bring this to the floor, and, and, and thank them for the constant communication that we had between our offices and then with other, uh, other individuals, other stakeholders that, that, that wanted to contribute to, to, um, the creation of this bill. You know, Madam Speaker, you know, I know what some of the concerns are with, with, with some of the people, but one of the things I wanna lay, and, and as far as laying the fear, this has got nothing to do with abortion. This has got nothing to do with, with that whole, with the whole argument about, of the woman's right to choose. I recognize that. This is protecting that woman's choice to be able to carry the baby to full term, and wanting to give that baby the best, the safest environment that she can, and having, and having the same protections for that child, for that unborn being, okay, while she's carrying that in, in her womb. You know, Madam Speaker, God help us for the day that this does occur, and then the lit woman is left trying to figure out, well, what about my child? What about my future? What about the dreams that I had? And hopefully, this serves as a preventive measure towards individuals who want to be able to do this. Don't get me wrong, you shouldn't hit anybody, whether male or female. I'm totally against that. I'm totally against any kind of violence with regards to that. So, but this also protects the being, the being that this woman wants to see come to full term. Secondly, Madam Speaker, I remember the joys that I saw in people's faces as they were walking out of your office and other, other offices, when a physician, when, when Dr. Shea was here and giving ultrasounds. What was being seen in that ultrasound? It was, they, they were seeing the heads, the faces, the, the body parts, the, the movement of the hands in 4D. And we provided them that opportunity here. And then, lastly, in a previous piece of legislation that's now law, this body unanimously supported that we should protect, that we should make it a crime to be able to smoke in a vehicle with a pregnant woman in the car. Because we felt concerned of not only her safety, her health, but the health of the child that she was bearing. So, if we're going to do that there, then I thought it was only, that, that this body has got no issue, and sees that we need to protect that being. And so, you know, along those lines, Madam Speaker, I, I wanna thank, again, the many co-sponsors that I have, that we, that, that this legislation, this is not just my legislation. And I'm gonna go ahead and yield, uh, or, well, timeout or yield. I'm gonna yield to, uh, to one of the, one of my sponsors, uh, in my closing, so that he can make some remarks.
I was gonna, Senator.
Madam Speaker, may I request a very brief recess? Just to discuss with the author something that I just wanted to clarify real quick.
Okay, brief recess. One moment, the legislature's back in session.
Oh, thank you.
Senator Blas, I know you're excited to get.
I know I am.
The third reading, okay?
Because, you know, Madam Speaker, I'm, I'm very excited that, you know, that giving you the opportunity as well to be able to consider this, you know, piece of legislation. With that, Madam Speaker, I, I, again, I wanna thank my colleagues, I wanna thank, again, the committee chair, uh, you know, um, throughout this whole process, and I'm, I'm hoping for, um, a unanimous support of this, uh, and, and the vote for by all of my colleagues, so that we can send a message, you know? You just don't hit anybody, and you most especially don't hit a woman who's bearing a child. So, thank you, Madam Speaker, I move that this bill be moved on to the third, third reading.
You're welcome. And on the motion to send bill number two-three-one to third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Bill number two-thirty-eight, Senator Underwood. Uh, I know it's your bill, but we had left off with Senator McCready, and I understand you have an amendment to two-thirty-eight. And does everybody have a copy of your amendment, by the way?
Okay, I'll pass it on.
Senator, does everybody have a copy?
Tom, can you pass this one?
Yeah. We're gonna take a brief recess until copies are provided for everyone. And Senator McCready, on your amendment, I, uh, copies are being distributed. You may want to go ahead and talk about the others, what's coming around.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, Madam Speaker, as I suggested, uh, yesterday in my testimony, uh, on, on bill, uh, two-thirty-eight, is that I think it is imperative that we allow this type of program to have life, and I would hate for the beginning to be the end. And so, therefore, Madam Speaker, I would like to proffer, uh, an amendment. I think it's gonna be three sections, and, uh, the first one is on line seven, page three of the bill. And this would state, "It is the intent of Illes Letourne Guahan to ensure the successfulness of the programs and services provided by the Community Social Development Unit Resource Centers, Divisions of Youth Development, by requiring the DYA to collect data on the effectiveness of its two-year continuation." That's my first amendment, Madam Speaker.
All right, and, and then, since that, rather than, since it, oh. Uh, well, no, because I was, I was gonna say the intent then would be in section one, under intent.
So, it's like adding a paragraph in?
No, it, it can, uh, like, for example, looking at, well, actually, we can do the, the exact same thing. The, uh, original amendment was to allow then legal counsel to place it where it's appropriate on the intent section, where, um, page three before the therefore. So, that's the second, that's, so that language then will go in there and will be added on before, the way I, the way I'm looking at it, but of course, legal counsel will be able to do it, is on page three, uh, with, starting with line, uh, seven, which will be amended by what you have here, and add that additional language that's double underscored.
Yes, and I have spoken to legal counsel about it already.
Yes, okay. Is everybody, um, on board? You understand, Senator? On page seven, I mean, three, look at, um, line seven. What it is, is that, that, so, seven to twelve basically would be, uh, deleted, and then add on these two paragraphs, starting from line seven to, um, probably lines fifteen, the new. There'll be a new section, I mean, new, new.
New paragraph.
Numbering. Senator? Yeah, so, we're gonna bifurcate this, or doing it section by section to be easier. So, yes, on the first, which is the, the intent.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate, um, effort of, um, the good center, who is proffering amendments. But we'd just like to, uh, clean this up a little bit, and, uh, make it a little bit more simple. Say that the intent of that it is to assure that the staff, all the co-ents and services provided by the community, social services and so on, and, yes, the staff.
Okay. So, to, to, okay, so then, so delete then fullness, and it would just ensure the success of? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My second amendment would be.
Okay, wait, so now, then, so, so that first part of it, then, no objections? So ordered? And then the second would be section two?
Section two would be, uh, "Therefore, it is the intent of Illes Letourne Guahan to appropriate." Section two would be, therefore, it is the intent of Illes Letourne Guahan to appropriate $500,000 from the unreserved fund balance. So the amendment there would change it from 250 to 500,000.
On the amendment, Senator Underwood and then Senator Torres.
Okay, let me yield to Senator Torres.
I just have a point of inquiry to the proposer of the amendment. What is the basis for doubling the appropriation amount from 250,000 to now 500,000, which by anyone's estimate is extremely substantial?
Senator McCready, do you yield to the question?
So, yesterday, when I was delivering my concerns, I fully support the bill of 250,000. But if we look back to the funding source that this bill is originally meant to, to adopt from, or take from, is the federal funding source that we lost, I believe it was two years ago. And so my whole concern was not allowing, it's almost like a broken promise, because this is such an important piece of legislation, I think we should put a little more priority into it. And so I did not think that one year was suffice enough to just then say, okay, we'll give them a year and we'll see how it works. I think that's kind of an empty promise in my eyes. So I thought, I would like to see five years, but obviously, five years is a little too long, so I settled for two years. Let's have a two-year program, let's double the appropriation, and let's see how we can, you know, because I have another amendment that would report the two years, the 24 months of how it is working and if we should move forward with it. So the reason why I doubled the appropriation, not because I just doubled it and said, here's 500,000 for one year, I want to make sure we have multi-years and enough funding so this program can be sustained and be successful. So this would, it now turns, if my amendment passed, it goes from a one-year to a two-year program with research at the end of the two years to make sure that we can, we can move forward on a successful, another two-year program.
Senator Torres, you still have the floor?
I don't know, forgive me, but I'm still confused because you're referencing an unreserved fund balance of a healthy futures fund as of a specific date of September 30th, 2015. So, I mean, it still doesn't justify in my mind how you can go from 250 to 500,000. I mean, it's a definitive, it's a definitive, definitive fund resource. Maybe the author can elaborate on the funding source and whether this is, in fact, a realistic amendment.
Senator Underwood, do you yield to the question?
Sure. You know, Madam Speaker, I did express to the Good Center proffering that amendment that I have concerns about doubling this up to 500,000 with all his good intentions of protecting and promoting the co-prints and services being provided by DYA. And, and, you know, my concern here is that we have not received a fiscal note from the administration. And so when I had set the amount at 250,000, it was in line with the plans that had been shared by the Director of Department of Youth Affairs, and it was based on our consultation. And so I'm really torn about this because, because on the one hand, I certainly would like to provide the Department of Youth Affairs the, all of the support that we could possibly give them to expand the services that they currently are providing through those community centers. And so, so I just want to go on the record that I certainly am concerned about setting this so high at this point that it would end up being vetoed because we don't have the funds to support the bill. I'm trying to be as realistic as possible. I certainly appreciate the sense of concern and commitment that the Good Center is expressing by proffering the amendment. You know, any other time, I would welcome this, but I also want to be realistic, Madam Speaker.
Senator Torres, you still have the floor?
I want to thank the author for that discussion, that more or less confirms some of my hesitation with this amendment. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the amendment, I have Senator Uggan, and then Senator Siniklis.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to just share a reservation in regards to increasing, or a concern with regards to increasing the funding from 250 to half a million dollars. And I say this in light of recognizing that certainly supporting our youth and our youth programs in the community should be a priority. Anytime that we have additional funding, it should be allocated specifically to reach out to our community, especially our at-risk youth, so that we can encourage them to be very constructive and productive citizens in the community. But Madam Speaker, at the oversight hearing that was conducted by the Committee on Appropriation, it was confirmed, based on my recollection, that there was approximately a $1.8 million balance in that particular account. If you recall, this body had enacted legislation that was forwarded to the chief executive shortly after the last session, where in fact, we allocated 1,175,000 specifically to take care of the utility requirements, the power and the water bills for the Guam Memorial Hospital. Here's an allocation of 250,000. There's another piece of legislation, Madam Speaker, which would bring the total amount to approximately the 1.8 million. And that legislation is in the docket to be considered by this body, which in fact would provide the balance amount of approximately 400,000 to finance the requirement.
You can't talk about another bill, but specifically this bill.
Okay, then, then I can say this much, Madam Speaker, that there is already piece of legislation.
No, same thing.
Same thing?
Same thing.
Okay, there are, there are other needs that could be identified by this body that I believe has already been publicly discussed in other forums and also by members of this legislature. So, Madam Speaker, I ask the sponsor of the legislation to please reconsider the amount and sustain it at 250,000.
Thank you very much, Senator, yes, okay. Senator Siniklis, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, this is obviously a good cause and a good purpose, but this is the exact, this is a classic example of why the public gets so confused, you know, because we say in one breath that there's only 235 in the tax refund account, and there's no money to be able to pay out the refunds faster, and the next breath, we can go from 250,000 in appropriation to 500,000 because somebody found out how to put two underlines under an amendment, you know? So, we really need to rethink how our actions and our spending correlate to the realities that we express and discover in our hearings and what we make known to the community with respect to the expectations they have for us. You know, when they say they want refunds paid out faster and we say we don't have the money for it, we really have no place doubling up on appropriations like this after we've just made that case to them. I mean, the actions and the spending need to correlate to the realities that we're trying to theoretically address. So I just wanted to make that case known, Madam Speaker, that until such time that our, that what we say yesterday jives with what we say today, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't bode well for the community to really trust what we say about the finances and the numbers. This is 2,000 times more than what's in the tax refund trust account.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator, is anybody else on the amendment? Because I understand the author's going to make an adjustment in the amendment, so, Senator McCready, maybe it would be best that we, I recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And after speaking to some of the senators and a good senator from Magana Heights, I'll go ahead and take off the 500,000 and keep it at 250,000. What I would like to change now.
So wait, so you're going, so you're going to withdraw that amendment?
I withdraw the amendment, the second amendment.
Okay, so no objections, so ordered, so it's.
And so my last amendment would be section three.
Okay, so you're not proffering?
I'm not proffering.
Section two, okay.
Section two.
All right. And so section three, which of course would be renumbered.
Section three would be renumbered, and, but it reads, "A detailed evaluation report which addresses the effectiveness of the programs and services provided by the Community Social Service Unit Resource Centers, Division of Youth Development shall be provided by the Director of Department of Youth Affairs to Illes Letourne Guahan on the six month, not 24, on the six month of enactment to this act to determine if this new legislation should be passed appropriating funds for its continuation for an additional year." And I think that would, it drops the appropriation, but then it also says that we have to do an evaluation to make sure that we do have another year for this program to be successful.
On the amendment, Senator Underwood.
Madam Speaker, I do have appreciation for the, for the idea that this program should be evaluated, all programs should be evaluated, but.
Madam Speaker, I'll repeat myself. I have an appreciation for that, for the amendment that requires a program evaluation. But, you know, Madam Speaker, I had worked for 13 years as a researcher and a program evaluator. Six months is not sufficient to provide a comprehensive dat, data or information about the effectiveness of a program. I would like to suggest an amendment that would be in the 12th month after enactment. You need to give the program at least one year, because the implementation process of those services and those special, like, the literacy program will take a while, and so I, I really, I'm in opposition to the six-month timeline, and I would like to proffer that be extended to one year.
No objections.
So on the Underwood amendment then, which would be then to amend the six months to the 12th month, so 12 months after that amendment to have the evaluation, is that correct, Senator?
Yes.
Okay, so no objections, so, oink, got to be faster, the hand has to be faster than the gavel. But to, on the main motion, if you'd like to speak, absolutely.
Yeah, just, I just rise to, to expound, start a little bit on what the mover of the amendment is trying to do to provide a six-month evaluation. I know that the comprehensive evaluation should really encompass a full calendar year, but the idea of having a six-month evaluation would give the legislature an idea, six months from now, whether or not an additional 250,000 should be put into the upcoming fiscal year budget. And if you look at the six-month requirement of when this evaluation report will be due, we would also be, we would find ourselves in the budget cycle. And so I understand what the individual, the good senator who said that you need 12 months, but I think the six-month evaluation report would at least give the legislature an idea as to where the resources were applied, what kind of additional staffing was, you know, and so how many more kids were serviced as a result of having this 250,000 appropriation, which is, which augments the current CSDU division of the Department of Youth Affairs. So I think by making it 12 months, Madam Speaker, we're shutting ourselves off to the opportunity to providing additional appropriations for the upcoming fiscal year.
So, Senator Underwood, what is your next move?
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, I think we are all in agreement, but, but again, I am trying to be realistic here. And there are two types of evaluation. There's a formative evaluation, which monitors the progress of a program as they are trying to implement it. And then that formative evaluation can fall within the first six months or the first three months, but it's a continuous monitoring of the program as a program is being implemented. I believe that what, what had been expressed by the retiring speaker is really a formative evaluation. So if you can give me one minute to have the language here, but actually have, there are two types. There's a formative, which monitors implementation, and then there's the summative evaluation. The summative evaluation would actually answer the question, are we getting our money's worth for the investment that we have, that we've put into this program? The formative evaluation simply asks the question, are they implementing the program as they had intended to do? And so I believe that, again, I will say to you that at the very least, at the very most, within six months, you are talking about just actually gathering data, whether they were effective in attracting the students into the program, whether they were able to hire the additional staff, or they were able to conduct the training, which might even have to be procured. And so, so Madam Speaker.
I'm going to definitely allow you to do that, but I'm going to set it aside, and Senator Munia Barnes, please come up here and cover for we're able to, no, that's set aside, right, so please come up here.
Speaker Wampat? I'm going to go ahead and recognize you, as that bill is set aside for a couple of minutes to get the amendments in order. 245, do you want to go ahead and speak on that?
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to accept, or rather, yeah, to accept or place Bill 245. No, wait a minute, that was.
Is that as amended, Madam Speaker?
No, right, as substituted, to place, I mean, to accept, rather, Bill 245.
On that motion to accept first, as substituted on the floor?
Yes, thank, yes, as substituted.
As substituted, does everybody have a copy?
Can we please make sure that everybody has a copy?
I think it was passed out earlier, I got one on my desk.
You're right.
Give me a couple. 245, as substituted. The clerk doesn't have one, we'll just take a moment's recess. Can we, Sergeant of Arms, can we please get copies to all our members? 245, as substituted. It should be there. Right there. We're in recess. The legislature's back from recess. Based on the Sergeant of Arms needing to get documentation, we will go ahead and send Speaker Wampat's bill, say, go back, I will go back to Senator Nerissa on Bill 238. Are we ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Please proceed.
Yes, we're ready, thank you. So my amendment would actually be this, that a formative evaluation report, which addresses the effectiveness of the programs and services provided. addresses the effectiveness of the programs and services provided by the Community Social Development Unit/Resource Centers/Division of Youth Development shall be provided by the Director of Department of Youth Affairs, St. Elise Latour in Guam, by the sixth month of the enactment of this act to determine-- okay, period.
Period.
Of this act, period.
That works.
Senator Underwood, just for clarity's sake, the clerk has brought to my attention, when we were working on Senator Brent McCready's amendment, he had deleted Section 2, but also wanted to-- but also wanted to keep Section 3. And if I'm not mistaken, Speaker Wampat gavelled that in, and then Senator Respecho spoke. So are we still--
Section--
Do we need to speak--
She's only--
After Section 3 was accepted--
You're right. She's only made in the ending part.
So we're still on Section 3?
Yes.
On Brent's main motion?
Yes.
As accepted?
Right.
Okay.
So--
So does everybody have that?
I'll provide it, but--
And if we can provide a copy to the clerk? I know we're trying to save a tree, but--
Yes, I will. Okay, and we will also clear-- but I'm concerned about you noting that Section 2 was deleted. I believe there was an objection to--
The legislature didn't proffer the amendment yet.
No, he didn't.
Oh, okay, he didn't. Okay, so it's all by-- okay, thank you.
I wouldn't do that to you.
So Senator Underwood, just to be clear again, you had a very long amendment. The intent of your amendment to add on to Senator Brent McCready-- can you just repeat that for the record so the clerk can have a better understanding?
It was actually--
Where do you want to add?
I didn't want to add anything. It was actually the mover of the amendment who wanted to add the intent.
No, she's talking about Section 3.
Section 3?
That's one. You're talking--
Okay, I'll provide it to the clerk and to the legal counsel. You want me to read it again, Madam Speaker?
Yes, so just so that we're--
Okay, let me read it one more time.
Just so that we're clear, can you read Section 3 again?
Okay, Section 3.
Because I do know you want to make some amendments to that.
Okay, Section 3. "A formative evaluation report which addresses the effectiveness of the programs and services provided by the Community Social Development Unit/Resource Centers/Division of Youth Development shall be provided by the Director of Department of Youth Affairs, St. Elise Latour in Guam, by the sixth month of the enactment of this act."
Period.
Period.
Okay, does everybody have that? Anybody wish to speak on that amendment? If not, no objections. Motion carries. Then we're still on Brent McCready's amendment?
I can close. I can close?
Why are you closing? The intent has to be cleaned up.
They're just-- strike out, I want Section 1.
Right.
I already-- Okay, can I just clarify the intent? I mean, how I cleaned up the amendment?
Yes, Senator Underwood--
The intent.
Underwood, you're recognized.
Okay, just so we're clear. It should read-- okay, "It is the intent of Elise Latour in Guam to ensure the success of the programs and services provided by the Community Social Development Unit/Resource Centers/Division of Youth Development by requiring the DYA to collect data on the effectiveness of this program."
Everybody clear with that?
You have to move it back.
Yes. okay, so Senator Underwood, you're reading the beginning paragraph of Senator Brent McCready's amendment, and I just want to be clear that in the-- to-- after DYA to collect the data on the effectiveness--
On the effectiveness of this program.
Of this program, and you're going to delete its two-year--
Yes.
Okay. On that motion, everybody clear? No objections?
No.
No. It did pass, but she's changing--
I had to clean it up.
And deleting--
Effectiveness of the program and services.
Effectiveness of the program and services. Does everybody get that?
It did pass.
Okay, are there any objections?
No.
Senator Underwood, just read it one more time for the record.
Okay, let me read it one more time. "It is the intent of Elise Latour in Guam to ensure the success of the programs and services provided by the Community Social Development Unit/Resource Centers/Division of Youth Development by requiring the DYA to collect data on the effectiveness of the programs and services."
Okay. On that motion, without any objection, motion carries. Senator Underwood, you still have the floor.
Okay, I also just want to make sure we're clear that on Section 2, there was an amendment that was proper--
No, that doesn't count.
That was not-- Okay, then that's it.
And then that's it.
No, they said that that doesn't--
How would you do that?
Okay.
Section 2 was deleted from the--
And he did not offer--
And he did not offer Section 2.
Okay, but then there was a paragraph in his-- in the amendment that was passed around after that first one, the intent. It says, therefore, it is the intent of Elise Latour to appropriate--
You didn't proffer that?
No, it wasn't-- Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So that's not--
Okay, so on Senator Brent McCready's amendment, as amended, is there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator McCready, you can close on your amended, as passed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'd just like to--
As amended, as passed.
I know it's kind of confusing, but basically what we have kept intact is the $250,000 original appropriation, and we closed the 24-month data research, and we shortened it up to six months. And what this essentially does is it allows us, after six months, to then fund this through the budgetary cycle, like Senator Respecho was saying, and we can now accomplish the long-term goal that we originally wanted to do, which was have this a multi-year funding source. And so that, I think we accomplished that the only way we could have today. So I thank you very much, and I thank my colleagues.
Okay, on the McCready amendment, any objections? No objections? Motion carries. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? Anyone else? Senator Tommy Morrison, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want to rise in support of Bill 238. I also appreciate the previous speaker in wanting to double the amounts of this appropriation. Madam Speaker, when you read-- when you read through this clearly on the services that the CSDU has-- is offering, including homework, assistance to our youth, mentoring, tutoring, computer labs, arts and crafts, gardening, life skills, physical, fitness, sports, activities, after-school these are all programs that are-- or services are geared to keeping our kids off the street. And it-- I liken this to what we had many years ago with our youth centers in every single village. And I want to ensure, even though sometimes we seem like we're doubling the amount here, sometimes we have to look back in history of the amounts that we-- this government used to appropriate to with the youth center program. And that program was in the millions, if not mistaking, that kept these youth centers alive. This is a similar type of service, and I want to ensure that when we look at $250,000, I don't want this body to get caught up in the fact that that's too much, if you look at the services that we're providing here. So when the previous speaker was mentioning of doubling the amount, we really got to take a look back in time to seeing how we funded the youth centers programs. We all know what happened to that, and it's completely gone. A program that serviced-- I think many of us were a party to the youth center program. I was one. I think I was the last generation of the youth center program. But when we look at funding programs like this, we want to ensure that, you know, we don't get caught up with the other priorities and look into the details of this measure and ensure that going forward, yes, the previous speaker is right. I don't think-- this should not even be looked at as a biannual. This has to be something sustained for five, 10 years to come, looking at the services that they're providing. So I thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to provide some comments on this measure and ensure that when we go forward in the budget process, that we look further than two years. We look 10 years, 20 years, because when you look at the youth center program and what it's done for many, many of yous-- I think you're a part of the youth center program too. And I think we got to look back at what worked and revive those programs. Thank you.
Thank you. On the main motion-- thank you, Senator Morrison. On the main motion, we will entertain Senator Respecho and then Senator Munia Barnes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise to applaud the author of this bill and also the co-sponsor of the amendment that wanted to provide additional funding for the Department of Youth Affairs' Community Social Development Unit. Madam Speaker, this whole conversation has certainly been encouraging because this body recognizes that prevention does work, and usually when resources are very scarce and limited, the first programs that go within-- throughout the government of Guam are prevention programs. Usually the monies that are limited are applied to those programs and services that provide triage in wanting to rehabilitate the youth and their families. And in the case of the Department of Youth Affairs, usually the priority is placed in the rehabilitation side or the Department of Youth Affairs' youth correctional facility. But over the years, the Department of Youth Affairs has evolved so much so, Madam Speaker, that they provide a holistic approach to youth and families where the solution is not to just throw them into the Department of Youth Affairs' youth correctional facility or to provide for a junior department of corrections. The solution over the last decade has really been to take care of the youth and their families and to take care of them in settings that are not traditional rehabilitation-type settings such as a youth correctional facility. You know, in the case of CSDU, I also want to take the opportunity to rise to thank our family court judges for recognizing that the solution is not to immediately remand these kids to the youth correctional facility, but merely to recognize that the Department of Youth Affairs has a unit from within the department, specifically CSDU, that provides after-care and jumpstart services, that these judges have recognized that instead of putting them into the youth correctional facility and increasing the population and subjecting our kids to that kind of rehabilitative punitive-type setting, they recognize that the CSDU's after-care and jumpstart programs provide the kind of services that would put that child back on the right path. And so I really am grateful of not only the bill and the amendment, but that this legislature is moving toward and continues to move toward this direction where the solution is not just to throw them in a youth prison-type setting and lock the key-- and throw away the key and lock them up forever until they're 18, then you transfer them to DOC, and that's never really been the case with this department. And I am so grateful that from the director on down to every single employee at DYA recognizes and they treat and they respect these children as if it were their own. And so I'm-- it's a proud moment for this body to be able to recognize this effort through Senator Underwood's introduction of Bill 238, and I'm grateful to speak in support of it. Thank you.
Welcome, Senator. On the main motion, Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Sidus Masi, Madam Speaker. And again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise and support this Bill 238-33, Elise. And I also want to acknowledge the author's attempt to move this funding source for these resource centers. And I want to say, Madam Speaker, as Oversight Chair of Housing and GURA, when these resource centers were given the opportunity through GURA's community block grant and doing these resource centers, I couldn't have agreed more than the good senator of Humannac and the retiring speaker, Senator from Magana Heights, who was the former director. And it was his vision to see that sometimes when these kids come in, it's because there are other obstacles that are in the way. And all you need to do is find-- not even a level playing field, but something to help them get away from the problem and the situation that they're in. He was one advocate at the time, Madam Speaker, who said, "These kids don't deserve to be in a prison-type setting. They should be given the guidance and the support to do what's right." And when you partner up with nonprofit organizations, centers like what this program has today and the resources that are being provided, then it is truly a win-win. And when the good retiring speaker spoke about how these kids really shouldn't be on that type setting, I couldn't have agreed more because it was his leadership-- it was through his leadership that the rate of youths that were incarcerated at Department of Youth Affairs had dropped tremendously. And he had proven to the administration at the time, when he was the director of DYA, that if you just pay attention to these youth and give them and provide them the resources and even to help the families because they may be in a situation way beyond their control. Some of them go through-- had to go through domestic violence, some of them, you know-- for whatever reason, from family breakups to deaths in the family, to just anything. Sometimes these kids feel that they're not loved and they're not wanted. And I'll never forget that because that's when I believed that the director of Youth Affairs that time truly believed that these kids can succeed in life. And I always believed, Madam Speaker, if you build it, they will come. You have to lead by example, and leadership truly begins with listening and taking the time to help garner this. And this was many years ago. I think the good senator from Magana Heights started working in the government when he was 14. And I know he doesn't like to be-- but I guess sharing his accolades for when he was the director of DYA. But there, I want to share with you, Madam Speaker, in that timeframe, I want to share with you that there were a lot of kids who went through the system. And because of that leadership that he shared with his staff, with the youths that were incarcerated, he said, "Let's find a better place for them." And he truly-- today, I know of several, if not a few troubled youths that he took the time to listen to and now are supervisors and managers of jobs that they-- people would never thought that they would be at. And when the good senator from Humannac spoke about what these programs and these youth centers did back then in our time-- he's a bit younger too, but I want to share with you that the successes that come out of them-- truly, Madam Speaker, maybe one day we'll have that professional football, soccer, baseball player, that math genius, that chess champion. The letter that came in the report-- in the committee report showed a woman-- a single mother of two children in the Haza Youth Center, and it said because of this center that her daughter was going to be given an award because she had passed the SAT-10 test. Something probably others would have never thought that she would pass, but it was because of this center and centers like this that helped this child succeed. So it is important that we-- So, it is important that we look at this funding opportunity to be provided and that we give the resources and that with the amendments that are in place to strengthen, to do that survey or that reporting, to see how much good this can, this program can be and the additional funding that we could give to bring this program full circle. I think, Madam Speaker, we have to do our part. So, I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and support Senator Underwood's legislation, but more importantly, that it doesn't stop here, that we continue to look at programs like this because it is an important ingredient. It's not just health, safety, and education. It is about providing youths the opportunity and a place to go. Build it and they will come. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. So, to close, Senator Underwood?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I want to thank all my colleagues who have risen in support of this bill. You know, the retiring Speaker had talked about a mother who had spoken about how the center had helped her daughter achieve a high level of achievement with the SAT 10. But there was also another mother that came in during the public hearing, and she was a single parent. Her children, she attested, were going through, she was going through a divorce. And her children really needed after, an after-school program while she tried to go to school and even tried to get, go to work. And she specifically noted that the center and the counselors there have really provided the support for her boys and how she said it was because of the centers on after-school program, they open until 7:00 PM, that she was able to work and even take classes from the University of Guam. So, you know, these centers have really, and the workers there have been unspoken heroes. And I just want to commend the Director of the Department of Youth Affairs for continuing to work with me and really to ask me, "Please, just give, we need help." Because these centers have really proven to be very effective. And we want to increase our outreach, not only to those who have been remanded by the court as an alternative to going to, being confined, but to reach out to those youths who are at risk and for us to be able to increase the number of students that will be able to take advantage. They have even demonstrated how they have gardens, that they are teaching the participants gardening skills. And I think that is really, those are the kinds of life skills that our kids need, everyone needs. So, Madam Speaker, I also want to thank you for just giving us a sense of history on where we were with the community centers and how effective they have been. So, with that, I thank everybody and I would like to please amend this so that we can add cosponsors to this very important bill. And I would like to add Senator Brent McCready, Senator Rory J. Respecho, and Senator Morrison and Senator Tina Munia Barnes.
On that motion, if there are no objection, motion carries. Thank you very much. On the motion to put it down in the voting file, no objection, motion carries. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized on your bill now, 245, as substituted. And if you can just read that again.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my motion, my first motion would be to accept 245-33 as substituted on the floor.
On that motion, without objection, motion carries.
Thank you very much again. My other motion then would be now to place, motion to place 245 to the third meeting file, and I'd like to just briefly describe what it's about.
Please proceed, Speaker.
Thank you very much. Bill 245 is relative to authorizing the Guam Public Library System to lease a portion in their building referred to as the Internet Cafe for the purpose of operating and managing a high-quality and reasonably-priced cafe. The library, the Neves Flores Memorial Library in Agania, is scheduled to reopen its doors in the upcoming month following long-awaited and much-needed renovations. As it opens its doors, library patrons can now see a revamped children's library, a study room, and a very new feature to the establishment, a cyber-tech cafe. The cafe, however, cannot legally operate because the current statute right now regarding the library property only permits leasing for the operation of any food or drink establishment specifically to the front of the library, outside the library. So, in 2011, the public library system was authorized via legislation then to enter into contract for the lease of its frontage property and in accordance with the current procurement law. So, what I've done and the reason for the substituted version was to go and take the existing law and on Section 1, if you see A, Part A, that's the language is provided by law where it says on line 5, the lease of its frontage property. And then, on the next page, you would see then the amendment. And the amendment would be for B on lines 5 to 9, is that now the public library system will be hereby authorized to solicit on contract for lease of the Internet Cafe located at Neves Flores Memorial Library in Agania for the operation of a food establishment to provide drink and food services for library patrons and the general public for the purpose of generating a source of revenue to support library infrastructure and attracting patrons to the establishment. And then, on the same law, again, where it says just a frontage, is now to include then the Internet Cafe on line 12, line 15, and then on line 16, which of course, the revenues will be used for facility maintenance, improvement, supplies, and programs. And lastly, again, in existing language, which is on page 3, is that the funds then a new subsection D, the funds directed as a result of revenue received from the contract for lease of the frontage property, again, is to add the Internet Cafe, shall be subject to an annual audit by the public accountability and that the board shall establish policy procedures for this. The good thing that everyone can rest assured too is that the use of this fund will be approved by the majority of the library board, which is again, a thing that is part of the frontage property, but now to include the Internet Cafe. And that these funds then that they have received will be maintained in a separate and apart from any other funds of the government. And we had verified with the Prime of Administration that they do do that because they do actually collect some monies. One would be overdue books and then the other would be fundraisers that they would have. And DYA keeps that as a totally separate fund. So, I ask our colleagues to please support and authorize then the library to now lease that portion within their building, the Internet Cafe. And the reason again for this, because in our conversation with GSA, they were not able to move forward with the RFP into such time that we actually amend the law to include now the cafe. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. Speaker Wampat, to speak on the main motion, I have three who raise their hand. Senator Frank Blas, then Senator Tom Adda, then Senator Tommy Morrison. Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, the great thing about, you know, going through legislation like this, similar to this, it's a great bill and I don't want to speak against it. But the great thing about it is it gives us an opportunity to look at, you know, the law as it exists and making sure that in line with what the purposes that we want to do, that the law is consistent with this. And so, I'd like to be able to make a couple amendments to this just so that it's, you know, it's consistent. First one is on page 1, line 8. It says, "Services to include but not limited to the selling of coffee and other drinks or snacks." Okay? So, I don't think, I think the purpose was drinks and snacks. So, to change the word "or" to "and."
On that motion, no objection. Senator Frank Agonya, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Just for the mover of the amendment and also the sponsor of the legislation. Now, if we're looking at leasing a piece of property specifically to generate revenues, do we want to restrict the business enterprise in terms of the extent of the services or the products that they want to offer? Because let's say, for example, a whole new product comes in and it doesn't necessarily fall into the category of drink or snacks. It could be considered somewhat of a meal. Now, do we want to restrict that and limit the opportunities or the economic benefits that a business enterprise or a startup entrepreneur may realize as a result of this facility? That's just a question that I bring because it brings focus into whether in fact, we want to restrict this business from entering into an arrangement that would otherwise provide them at least with the maximum economic benefit that they can give back to the library. Just a question.
And I appreciate that. I think that, Madam, I just need to be clear. This is actually an amendment that is to amend language in existing law. And I understand the Speaker's, you know, proffer of this legislation is to amend and to provide a new provision to this. I recognize that. I think that, but though, that said, it's giving us the opportunity to make sure that it doesn't conflict. I, you know, where Section 1 says drinks or snacks, Section 2 says food and drinks, drink and food. Section B.
Continue to say "and/or."
So, just for the purposes of clarity and purposes of making sure that it's consistent, just want to make sure that I know what the purpose is. It's so that, you know, drink and food. I just don't want anybody to say, "Yeah, but, you know, you said the Internet Cafe can drink and food, but, you know, my snacks stand outside, can only do drink or snacks." It's, you know, again, for the purposes of consistency. That's why I bring it.
On the motion, on the amendment, are there any objections?
It's because it's, on yours, it's got "and." I just want to make sure that we change this one to, same thing, say page 2, you got "and."
But we'll go ahead and entertain page 1.
Okay.
Are there any objections? No objections? Motion carries.
And then, secondly, you know, I just, it just kind of struck me here. Line 9, page 1, "with a facility to consume them on the premises." First, you're talking about a mobile snackable bill? And then, you're saying with a facility to consume them on the premises? Are we authorizing them to build something?
No.
Yeah, but with a facility to consume them on the premises. Right. Again, it doesn't have to do with the bill, it's just, I just don't want that now we have two different ways to be able to establish that we have to be consistent.
Speaker Wampat, would you like to answer that? I think he's posing a question to that.
Okay, Madam Speaker, for the purpose of this, because it really won't hurt, it's just, actually, just delete "with a facility to consume them on the premises." Okay.
Okay. So...
So, change "a facility," take out "a facility," and then just put "with accommodations."
On that motion, everybody? No objection?
And lastly, Madam Speaker, we have this habit in the government, we go ahead and start something and then after that, after we put it up, then we decide that we owe, we need rules and regulations for this. So, I want to make this very clear. So, on page 3, line 5, after subsection 80128, insert the words prior to the opening of the Internet Cafe or any contracted food establishment? Well, and the reason why, and I'll tell you the reason why, okay? Is you're going to get into this whole process of now they're going to have an Internet Cafe and then there may be issue with regards to the operations of it.
Okay. Speaker Wampat, would you like to answer the inquiry, please?
Yes, sorry, Madam Speaker. I know I should just follow my own rules as well. But you get caught up when, you know, you turn around and you look.
Go ahead, Speaker.
I understand, of course, wanting to have it go through the AAA process, but, you know, we do have, you know, a board and I know that there is the urgency because they're going to be opening the library actually very soon there. And I just would hate that, you know, going through AAA process actually takes about, I would say, 90 days. And we just did one where we did it for the museum, knowing, of course, in terms of setting up the fees, that it could, the process could take a little bit longer. What they're going to also do is that they're going to have to put out an RFP to anyone, any of the existing cafes that are coffee cafes that are currently operating here in Agania. And they're definitely an interest, every single one of them are definitely interested in this, but I just would hate to not have them move forward with it. I think maybe that the board shall establish policies and procedures for the administration of this, but would not, and they can do the AAA, but not to somehow delay them from continuing even though they're able to come up with their own policies and procedures. I mean, I don't know legally how we can do that, but it's the same, I guess, like an interim, similar to the fees and fines. And if the mover here would also agree that maybe we can do that, that the library board shall...
Speaker?
...establish an interim policy and procedures for the administration while, and give them a date then to do this, but...
I'm going to give you two a brief moment recess. A brief.
Brief.